All right, Sean, you about ready?
I'm so ready.
Oh, you run this show?
Yeah.
I had to talk about me, all right?
It's only six twenty-nine, though. I'm waiting. I'll start it on time, so we're gonna end on time, I promise.
While you're waiting, that packet on the table is the one for this week, so we're not gonna review it tonight in meeting. But you guys can take a look and sign if you'd like.
At six thirty and read your name?
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
That big balloon? I only got two shirts that were appropriate.
So, good evening, and thank you for joining this regular meeting of the Reeffield Select Board. Today's August twelfth. First agenda item is twenty-five zero zero nine. Minutes for Select Board Retreat and Meeting from July twenty-second and July thirty-first.
So you need to do three separate ones?
Just two separate ones.
Two separate ones, so. So, the meeting on July twenty-first?
The first? Second.
Seven twenty-second.
Go ahead, sir.
We can ask if there's any questions about minutes. We just got done.
If anybody has any questions or anything they'd like to...
All right, there you go. I'm moving to accept the minutes of the meeting on July twenty-second.
Second. Have motion in a second. Any discussion?
My name was spelled wrong on page three. Only thing I found.
Anything else? All those in favor? Catherine is excused for the evening. Motion passes. Retreat.
The retreat, but that is the thirty-first, right?
Yep.
So I'm moving to accept minutes for the retreat on July thirty-first.
Second. I have a motion in a second to accept the minutes for the Select Board Retreat workshop on July thirty-first. Any discussion? All those in favor? Catherine is excused, thank you. All right. Twenty-five zero ten warrants, three through six, that is myself. I'm gonna do three and four first, so three and four was to the sum of sixty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. We made our first of three payments to the Cobusie Watershed for nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-three. Our continued payments to David Ladue for two thousand and the Dergo Assessors for twenty-five hundred and amongst our regular fees and bi-weekly payments there.
I'm moving to accept warrants three and four in the amount of sixty-three thousand dollars, sixty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor? It's unanimous. So warrants five and six was a whopper of eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Of that, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars was our first two payments to RSU thirty-eight. We also had seventeen thousand, two hundred and five dollars for our truck upgrades, so the fitting for the polycaster and the plow, right?
That was... Yep, that should be the polycaster and the plow.
Okay, perfect. And then we had forty-five hundred dollars to Joseph Ferrani for cemetery work. And then eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars towards our state, our employees' retirement funds. That is warrants five and six.
I'll make a motion to approve warrants five and six, the amount of eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents.
Eighty-nine?
Eight hundred and eighty-nine.
Chuck, you have a ten-dollar tip there?
What? It was eight hundred and eighty-nine, it says on here. Oh, did I? Oh, sorry. Eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy cents.
That motion?
I'll second that.
I have motion in a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. We now move on to communications. Select Board, anybody have anything they would like to say? Well, I will go first then, or go. I just wanna thank everybody that was a part of Heritage Days over the weekend. It's impossible to make every event that goes on that day, especially Saturday, but, you know, it was a really great testament to the town, there was a lot of great people around. I know my family had a wonderful day. And I just thank everybody that helped put on all those activities. It was pretty awesome, pretty great spectacle of what Reeffield is. Anybody else?
Second.
I don't wanna go too much into it, because Dennis is joining us at seven to talk about Heritage Days, so. All right, staff communication. Eric, you're up. Town manager's report, please.
Yes. Note there. So I wanna thank the board members and public and guests, everybody who attended the annual summer residence meeting on August second. I didn't attend that this year, because I was otherwise occupied, but it sounds like it was a good turnout and there were some good feedback, so that's always a positive thing. I'll be out of the office this coming week, the rest of, like, basically, Wednesday through Friday of this week for the managers' conference. And that's something I go to every year, it's a good training and networking opportunity.
Is that in Cancun?
No, it's at Sunday River, which is, it's close.
That's close, on the way.
Yeah, on the way, yeah. But I will have my cellphone and email, and I check that regularly, because I just, you know, can't let shit go, so. But anyway, so that's gonna happen. We will be accepting applications for the community programming coordinator positions in the summer, so if anybody has interest, please do apply. And we're getting to the point where I'd very much like to have somebody in place, because we're getting into fall sports planning, and it's gonna be very important over the next few months to do some prep work if we're gonna have programs in the summer next year. So we really need to get that position filled. Now, Ben Rodriguez, continuing on with staffing, his last day was the eighth. He actually had a close contact with someone that had COVID, so he didn't get COVID, but we were concerned and didn't wanna risk it, so he actually, you know, we didn't have a going-away party for him, but we will be rescheduling that, and I'll send out a notice to the town like we did before. And I do wanna thank Ben for all he has done to the town publicly on video, because he has been a phenomenal asset and had a very positive attitude that really helped a lot of people, so. I just wanted to say that. Tax bills were mailed out, and they should have been received by most people last week. The Fairgrounds Community Park fundraising page is live, and we're moving forward with that. I'm trying to get a meeting together to help speed some of that along. We had a good showing, I think, with the kickball tournament at Heritage Days. I understand that there's some funds from that, they're gonna be coming towards the Fairgrounds project. Let's see, speaking of fairgrounds, I did meet with Greg and Jerry Bly to talk with the National Guard, and that was very constructive. We learned that they have more capacity in some areas and a little bit less in others, so there's still gonna be a tremendous help, and they'll be doing the bulk of the work for that project. It will likely be summer of twenty-twenty-six at this point, because unless somebody gets backs out or their project falls through, their training schedule for twenty-twenty-five is pretty well booked. So we will know by October or November whether or not we'll have a twenty-five project, and by January, I think, whether or not we can do twenty-twenty-six. So, pretty good timeframe. It does fall in place with the funding for the wind and water. So things are going well there, but we just need to continue on with looking at other sources and still looking for about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand right now. We were awarded a grant for five hundred dollars for the Torsey Pond Nature Preserve, so that's a bit of positive news. And Angelica is making progress with the GIS mapping reconciliation process, and that's basically making our tax maps and our tax records, you know, work together so that we can have them available online. And so that's been a good project to get started on. And we hope that that's gonna be resolved by the end of August, but we'll see. These projects sometimes have a way of extending because of other things, but roads, traffic, parking, and safety, the road striping has begun and crack ceiling is slated for late August. They said it might be into early September, but that's scheduled. Our infrastructure adaptation grant was not approved, unfortunately, so that was a big disappointment. That was a hundred and thirty-five thousand roughly, which would have been used for Church Road, or not Church Road, for Plains Road, excuse me, for work we'd already committed to, but it would have been nice to have some of that paid for. Further discussion with our insurance company, a municipal, did inform me that it was just the building structural coverage that was removed. We still have general liability on Salt Sand Shed. So that's much better than I thought it was originally. It's still not great. And MMA did look at trying to find a few different companies that might be able to provide that coverage for us, and they said that they weren't able to. We might try someone local. But at this point, it really does look like our best bet is to start working with an engineer and get a real firm answer on whether or not there's any salvage value in that building or to help us design one, because as soon as you hit two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars with public spending, you're required to have an engineer on the project anyway. So it makes sense to look at that early rather than later. The responsive speed signs installed on Route seventeen by M A T U D are now live, and those are very nice. You can see if you're going thirty-five, when you're supposed to be going twenty-five, it flashes at you, so that's really helpful. And we do expect to have a few more things like that installed. We do have a crosswalk sign that is the kind, the push-button kind. We just need to work to get that installed. We're gonna start with one up by Kent's Hill, where it's less busy, and then we're gonna try to bring one or two down to the beach and Route seventeen and Church Road intersection there, so that we can have three on Route seventeen. The one on Church Road will be taken care of as part of that sidewalk project, but those are a really good device, and they help with traffic control and safety, which is the main priority. The F five fifty truck is in Bangor for upfitting, and that should be in service by the end of August. We did, well, that's an old one, forgot to delete that one. We did work on the roofs at the fairgrounds, so we've got nice red roofs there, salvage materials, so I'm quite happy that we saved a bunch of money by doing that in-house and using leftover materials. Transfer stations, the last bit. Summer hours are in effect through Sunday before Labor Day weekend, so we've got a couple more weekends in August, and then we'll be out. And then we've had some windstorms, the one on Saturday night or Friday night, whichever it was, took some branches down, but I just wanna remind folks that we do take brush the transfer station, just try to make sure that it's, you know, smaller, less than eight inches, no big trunks and no root balls. So, that's my report.
Anyone have any questions for Eric? Eric, your treasurer's report.
All right, this'll be a little bit quicker. It's the first month of the year, so the budget and actuals are all very close, and also, we don't have a year-to-date, because it's the same as the month. Two things worth noting are that we did roll forward another two-hundred-and-two-thousand-dollar SEDAR investment, and I did review and revise that schedule, so we got five-point-five, five-point-zero-five percent, and that is, I think, the last time we will see above five percent interest rates on SEDARs and CDs if things go the direction that most people think they will. So, not the end of the world, but it still is a pretty good yield. We just did that for three months, so that we can capture the highest return on that one little chunk. And we now have multiple CDs and SEDARs that will be maturing this fall, about three or four in sequence, and it'll give us a good opportunity to pull some of that money if we need to or just reallocate it. Our audit also began, and they were on site August first, so that's for the year ending of June thirty to twenty-twenty-four. So that's a positive, positive, I guess, activity that we're getting started with that. And otherwise, things are about as expected with the financials. There's a lot of variability, but it's hard to pinpoint exactly why, it's just a one month out of twelve, so you can't really narrow things down too much. But I think everything looks good. I didn't see anything too unusual, so. That's my treasurer's report.
Thank you.
How long did I have, Sean? Five minutes? I took like fifteen, is that about right?
You, you got ten, and you took about ten.
All right.
I think you're right on. We're doing great, Eric. So our next thing is we have boards, committees, commissions, and departments in your packet. You will find minutes from the cemetery committee from July fifteenth, twenty-four, the planning board from May, July ninth, and July twenty-third, and draft. Thank you for those. Anybody here have something to say? Boards, committees? Nope, there's no one here. Okay. Save the other five minutes. Any members of the public? None of you do either? Okay, that's another five minutes. We are now at appointments, reappointments, and resignations. So twenty-five zero one-one, conduct appointment of two representatives to the Kennetwick Valley Council of Governance Board of Directors. Eric?
So, we do work with the K D C O G pretty regularly, they're a good partner for specialized services that we might not have access to. They support us on planning work, they support us on they did a couple of the call plan, they, one of the biggest values we get out of them is the bulk purchasing for salt, for salt when we do winter, winter roads. But they're essentially a regional organization that supports municipal government and municipal government functions. I'm very active with the, with the K D C O G, I'd like to be reappointed, but it's certainly up to you guys. But one requirement is that we have an elected official on that board. I will say the meetings are, we probably have six or eight a year, they're fairly efficient, it's about an hour, hour and a half. The only downer is you go up to Waterville, maybe it's Fairfield, either way, it's up there pretty far. You can stop the governor's way back, it's, you know, but it is a good organization, I really enjoy working with them, and they've made some strides as far as providing better services recently, getting some staffing sorted out. So if you're at all interested in that, I think it would be a great appointment for one of the members of the Select Board. And unless you wanna do two, and that's fine, also.
Um, I have no interest currently of adding that to my plate right now, just to be honest. I appreciate Eric, that I think it's great if you would continue that for us. Do you have any sense that Catherine has?
I mean, she's not here, so you guys can do what you want.
Yeah, I mean, we can appoint her. She didn't say no.
Right, I like Catherine, I kinda don't want that relationship to change.
No, I know, but I share Sean's level of interest.
Sure, okay. We only have one active now, so it's not the end of the world, but
we couldn't pull a seniority cut.
I mean, if we have functioned adequately with one, and you find the value and the connection as the in your capacity, I'm happy with that.
Okay.
For the town. So we have to sign on that for you?
Well, no, I think it's just a, just completing the form, and I can do that if you, if you wanna make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint Eric Dyer to the Kennetwick Valley Council of Governments and to complete the paperwork for it.
Okay.
Second. I have motion in a second and any further discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thanks, Eric.
No problem.
I'm gonna take, we're gonna go to new business, just because our old business person is not supposed to be here till seven. So we're okay with that, we're gonna go to twenty-five square two, one, two. I discussed the goals and policy direction established at the July thirty-first Select Board Retreat. We have five minutes set aside for that. Does anyone wanna start by just kinda talk, given as a synopsis of how our retreat went or flavor of the meeting?
I think it pretty well, went pretty well, we all kinda had the same goals and direction.
Yep.
I think it was pretty smooth. We're all on the same page, I think.
I think it was very clear that we're excited about the work that has been done in town to date and realizing that there's a heavy lift going forward to complete it, but we also have some very daunting things coming up that we can't ignore. So although we said we didn't want any new goals, we somehow still managed to throw a couple in there, but we think...
Unavoidable goals.
Yeah, we just don't have any choices in that manner. So I'm just gonna read through them, if anybody wanted to say anything about them, that's great. So we went for, we have a goal on winter maintenance, so finding a solution to either interested contractors to bid or consider a public works selling. And Dave is gonna, Dave's gonna run that for us, yeah. We're gonna continue with our open space committee and plan update, which we're hoping that group of individuals will have something for us. What did we say, Jaren? End of December, six months? So Jaren's gonna help facilitate those conversations. Uh, I said I would like to continue working on the Fairgrounds project. Uh, be through the fundraising and any other discussions or support Eric might need. Uh, Steve and I have said we would like to look into what sort of beach improvements are feasible. And what sort of programming in connection with our school and our area, uh, we could look into. Eric has committed to continuing to find a rec coordinator. And that's something that I think we all want for the town, because it was pretty unanimous. Jaren uh, brought forward a po- a conversation on our tech improvement and productivity improvement. Uh, which we started tonight with our agenda packet, um, but also just looking at how our website can change to a dot gov. Um, and variety of things, and so Jaren's gonna keep working on that. Catherine has selected the goal of road and pedestrian safety. And then Steve has this long-term discussion goal of a summer day camp. Long-term goal. I just wanna, don't wanna get parents excited right now that are watching on YouTube.
Sign up, she'll not, will not start.
So that was a, I think it was a very uh, robust conversation about all the wonderful things happening in town and what we could do to. Continue them and just refine what we're doing. I miss anything?
No, I think it was a very good synopsis and I appreciate the directions set by the board and we'll make sure we communicate that to boards and committees. So we can all be working together, um, and also the staff as we get to our next staff meeting, so.
Yeah, it'll be a big part of our uh, chairs meeting coming up this fall, talking about our goals. And what role we see that each different board and committee would have in those, um, so that will be. Good place to start that next conversation. Hey, uh, man behind the curtain, are you interested in uh, coming on a little bit early?
Oh, sure.
Wonderful.
He's fixing some coffee, come on, sir.
All right. Uh, so old business, we have five minutes set aside. This was twenty-five zero zero five. Discuss the August ninth and tenth Heritage Days celebration. Dennis Price.
He comes back again.
We didn't get a curtain guy.
The man behind the curtain. This is the um, petty catch, so I'm off the love of that. Hello, good lord. Oh, my god, it's so cute. Um, hello, yes, uh, my name is Dennis Price and I am the chairman of the uh, Heritage Days Committee. Um, and we uh, just wrapped up uh, Heritage Days twenty twenty-four uh, this weekend. So um, I thought maybe I would talk a little bit about some of the things that I felt like worked pretty well. Um, things that we had questions about, things that we're continuing to still sort of find the the right balance. Um, this year, uh, probably, I would say, I have been organizing a summer Reed Field uh, event. For the last seven years, this was the seventh year. Um, and uh, it it, I I believe pretty much that this was the lo- largest one, the one that had the most stuff going on in different places. The most kickball teams, you know, we still had vendors and things like that. So we're, you know, it just goes to show you that things continue to build. And um, you know, you try your best to uh, make those incremental changes. Things that I felt like uh, worked really well this year is that there was a lot of, as I transitioned into not doing this again. Um, which I'm very excited about next year, so is my wife, uh, for our anniversary. Uh, but what what happened this year was it was like a transition year. Uh, so we had a lot of people, Angelica, Kristen down in the the office. Um, just a lot of people that were sort of taking a little bit more of the responsibility off of my uh, shoulders, which was good. Uh, because uh, I I think as we move forward, we wanna continue to 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 do that. Um, and and see, um, I would say that 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 was the biggest help is having people delegate, having people say, oh, I can do this. And saying, get her done, uh, and they and and send them off. The other thing that I would say is that by now, in our seventh year, uh, I feel like we, I try to, you know. We try to have as few meetings as possible. Uh, but what we do, what I service as an aggregate for all of the other events going on. I don't wanna run your event. I don't, I don't wanna make a poster for your event, but I wanna help market your event. Because at the end of the day, it's still part of Heritage Days. So that's really the the way that that we have approached that committee. Um, and 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 when you give people that autonomy and and to sort of say, check in, let me know, uh, it works really well. One of the things, uh, I wanna talk about new events, uh, first off, because I felt like we had a lot this year. Um, the the first new event was the five K and I can't tell you how happy. Um, and and certainly pleased that I am that the Maranica Lake Association and specifically Peter Washburn and Michelle Delisle. Uh, did a tremendous job of putting that together. I run a five K in Monmouth. Uh, meaning I send the emails. I've only run it once, uh, but I I I organize a five K. Uh, in Monmouth and I know that it is hard. There's so much and you, it's fishing. You don't know how many people are gonna sign up. You don't know, you know what I mean? And so it's, it it, in my, in my opinion, it is a weird way to try to be a fundraiser. Because i- i- it's not really funds, it's 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 awareness and participation. Um, and I feel like uh, this year they had forty runners. Um, they feel like they could double that, which I think would be amazing. Um, the best part of this process was convincing them to not have it go near the road. So that was very, very good. They wanted to, like, just a a little sliver from like where the trailhead comes out there on Main Street. Right across from the um, uh, weather vane and inn, and that just creates a whole slew of things. And so they were able to take that advice and they really did do a good job of changing their route. It was the same route twice, turned out perfectly and evidently, uh, people enjoyed it. Little damp, not gonna lie, little damp back there. Uh, but I I I, when I drove over, there were so many, a lot of families together. Uh, I know Eric's family was a part of that. I saw a lot of folks, you know, just just having a good kickoff. Uh, to their 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 Heritage Days. And then uh, from there, they would go to get breakfast uh, at the Masons. So uh, the Masons this year switched, uh, they'd been doing seven to uh, ten. But this year they did eight to eleven and it worked out so perfectly because of the race. Um, so it was really nice because they were done there around ten o'clock and folks were going over, so they were getting a late rush. Um, about about eight forty-five AM, uh, Ed Dodge reported they had done fifty breakfasts already. Um, so uh, I I haven't gotten any final numbers for for a tally for them, but I I'm pretty sure they had a pretty good day. Um, I also know that the library book sale uh, had a a good day as well. Um, unfortunately, uh, now I'm gonna keep talking about things that are new that worked, so here we go. Uh, having the Manchester Lions do food was tremendous. I got a Wednesday frightened call from my friend Bunny Parks. Uh, wanting her darnedest to try, try to figure out if they could not come. Uh, and get wet, and I kept the faith and I convinced her, uh, begged her really, uh, to make sure that she came. And I was so glad that they did. The only thing we lost was the ability to cook a taco salad. Uh, and you know what? It's a small price to pay for burgers, dogs and pulled pork, lots of meats from the Manchester Lions and they did an awesome job. People absolutely loved it. So we're gonna hope to to count on the Manchester Lions and make sure. Um, that that they know how much we appreciate them, but also what a great service they provided. So that was new as well. Uh, the final new aspect that I felt like really worked uh, at the beach was uh, having the Darling's Free Ice Cream Truck. Uh, Darling's Car uh, dealership based in Bangor, um, they take applications. Uh, and Kristen filled it out, uh, and it's free and they give you like, it's like a Hershey bar, you know, like a, like a, uh, uh, fudge bomb. Or like a nutty buddy and they just give it out. There's no scooping, it's just free. Um, and it was tremendous. The kids have met, I loved it. The guy was great. Um, and you know, it was so funny too, because they kept saying like, you think I could get another one? I go, yes, yes, you can. So, so you know, it was just, it was so fun to have that in in conjunction with everything. Uh, we ended up having about ten, uh, we had about ten vendors and we had three, uh, we had four different community organizations that came out. Um, we had a couple cancellations, some folks that were concerned about mobility issues on the wet grass, which I totally understood. And and I wanted to err on the side of caution. Uh, we also had another uh, vendor who uh, uh, got sick at the last minute. Um, and and so felt like they they should just be smart and not show up. So um, the 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 Darling's Ice Cream Truck, the Lions worked out really well. In terms of other, uh, there there weren't really other um, new uh, things that that we really had throughout the day. Um, those are the things that worked well. Um, and again, the best part about this organizational plan is that it's, it's like, you know. Everyone does their thing, but they just kinda report out to me so I can help, you know, give advice or shut up. Or, you know, say we can get you some resources. So that's my favorite part of that. Um, do you guys have any questions about those sorts of things, some of the new items that worked or anything like that?
I don't think so.
Okay. I just wanna talk about maybe some things that we are looking at, what we would call like a delta, something that maybe we wanna change, questions we may have. Um, we had to, uh, for for another year, we had, we've had the sock hop scheduled on a Friday night. And I know Kathy Landrum uh, wants to have a community thing like that, but I would say that that is still a slot Friday night. That we're looking to uh, continue to to find a more dynamic choice. Um, and so Friday nights, we're we're taking a look at. Um, we were planning to have four inflatable things uh, at the beach. The inflatable things were two games, a game where you can like kick a field goal. Uh, or kick like, make a soccer thing or something like that. And then the other two were uh, like, like bounce house obstacle course castles. One of it was a little, so long story short. Um, we were unable to have those because we had to make a decision on whether or not it was gonna be raining. And we had to do that Thursday and and as you know, the 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 forecast was so dynamic and changing. That we had to make the call, so we opted on the side of of not, you know, making sure that we didn't destroy anyone's equipment. Um, but we definitely, uh, definitely, it would, it would have been a really cool thing. Uh, I wanna say special thanks to Amy Tarian, uh, who was really instrumental in helping make that. Uh, get that information back and forth. Um, she she endured quite a lot of back and forth. Uh, for the sake of getting those inflatable. So uh, we're gonna investigate, we're gonna take a look at that. How can we uh, change that? How can we uh, do that better? Uh, and I think part of that is, uh, we may just buy our own inflatable. Just have it uh, and keep it if we have it in the budget and be able to have it. And so if there are other things that happen in town and and just use it that way, so. Uh, those are some of the things that we're looking at. Um, and and those are some of the things, the questions. Um, very thankful to the chief, uh, Lee Mank, uh, for bringing the barbecue at the fire station and the open house. I thought that was a great opportunity for people in the community, of which there are many new members uh, that we saw this weekend. Uh, and it was, it was really great. Uh, the final thing that I would just mention is special thanks to uh, Central Maine Pyrotechnics. Um, Greg is the guy, Greg was the big boom boom guy. He was like the leader down there from Reed Field. So I felt like we we got a very special display. If you got a chance to see it, it was phenomenal. Started, just smacked you in the face, uh, and then from there, it was just, it was all, it was all good. So um, overall, I would say thank you to everyone, uh, all the organizations, the makers, the vendors, all the folks that came down. Um, and thank you to all the organizations, the rec department for the uh, uh, kickball tournament, eight teams this year. Which is, it's so funny because there's some OG, like there's some OG kickball people who have played every year. And that was just a random idea from the Reed Field Festival, uh, that happened, I think, in twenty seventeen. So uh, I love that it's it's continuing. Um, but that's, that's about all that I have. Uh, oh, last thing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I have petty cash because we gave three kids uh, fifty dollars. Um, for uh, doing the achievement quest. Uh, and so it was great to see, you know, that when you give a kid a fifty dollar bill, they just look at you like, oh, I'm going. Um, so that was pretty great, so um.
And they wouldn't give any of it to their dad.
None. But it was, it was fantastic. We had a a lot of, a lot of great family stuff down at the beach. People had a good time.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions from the board, Dennis? Any comments? No.
All right.
Well, before you go, sir.
Yes.
We do have something else for you while you're here. Um, you unfortunately had to miss our volunteer appreciation uh, luncheon.
Yes.
Um, however, if you were there, you would have received the Spirit of America Award. Um, and so seeing as we've struck you and made you come here in person today, uh, we're gonna present you with said award.
Oh, you, okay, yeah, all right. Well, that's great, all right.
So I'm gonna read your nominations first and then I'll present you with your likes. So uh, I nominate Dennis Price to receive a twenty twenty-four Spirit of America Award. More than anything else, the word spirit and service leaped to mind when considering Dennis Price's ongoing contributions to this community. As leader of the community, Dennis Price has constantly and consistently encouraged, developed and recognized volunteers in Reed Field. One aspect of how he's quietly done this is through the example of his own personal volunteerism in town. As an energetic contributing member of committees and our select board. Dennis Price brings enthusiastic energy to celebrating our town through his years as the driving organizational force of our Reed Field Heritage Days celebrations. We've been fortunate to gather these annual events and all benefit from the suing community camaraderie, doing great part to the countless hours he has invested. In arranging for us to come together as a town. One cannot overlook the sense of humor, good humor Dennis Price brings to volunteer tasks. To our benefit as a professional entertainer, he's imparted some fun spirit along the way to achieving volunteer accomplishments. And he's donated some of this per- professional time at events. There are many volunteers to recognize in Reed Field over the Spirit of America Award has shown a spotlight of few. Those individuals are representation of the collective volunteerism that takes place in this community. I submit that Dennis Price is one of those fine examples to recognize this year and the board all agreed. So Dennis.
Oh, Lord, all right. Thank you very much. Oh, gosh, yes.
Um, so Bruce, Bruce Burgoyne did submit that nomination. He wasn't able to be here tonight, but he wanted to pass along his appreciation.
Oh, my Lord, this is great. This is fantastic. Oh, okay. Look at that, oh. Yes, sir. All right, well, good. Um, well, that's something. Thank y'all very much. I appreciate that. That's it's a, yes, I really appreciate that. Um, and um, yes. I'm never at a loss for words, but this sort of thing, I'm like, I hate it. So I appreciate y'all very much. Uh, and I also wanna say just as a personal note, Jaren, welcome. I I know it's the first time I've been here, but I'm glad to see you and I'm excited with this board. Uh, is gonna do, so thank y'all.
Thanks, Dennis. Thanks, Dennis. We appreciate you.
Absolutely.
Aren't you glad you came now?
Oh, my gosh, thank y'all very much.
But we didn't have any fun looking at his hair, dude, it was on the screen.
Okay, back to the agenda. New business twenty-five zero thirteen. Consider an annual order of the municipal officers for the application of taxes. Eric, could you give us just a little?
Sure.
Intro to that.
In order for um, tax to be applied to the ol- oldest balances first. Um, there is a process that has to be um, followed. Uh, I think it's a bit antiquated in state law, but it, but it's state law. So um, I am formally requesting that the board uh, allow us uh, to apply. Uh, tax payments to the oldest outstanding balances first. That, this is just the best way to help keep people on track and avoid um, unnecessary, uh, you know, foreclosure and conflict and all this other stuff that can happen. Um, and it just makes sense that you apply it to the oldest first. So this is something that we do every year. Uh, and um, you have that uh, request in your packet and I'm hoping you all can approve that process.
So we have to make a motion as long as I.
Yes, yep.
So I make a motion that we approve signature of this process moving forward for this year.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Yeah, thank you. That was easy.
Yes, we are gonna move to twenty-five zero fourteen. Consider an engineering proposal for mainland development for the second phase of the Fairgrounds Community Park Project. Eric?
Yeah, so this is the um, I guess the second phase uh, of the project includes final design. Um, also um, support for um, uh, some permitting work. And uh, this basically allows us to move forward with um, the the project as planned. Uh, we did budget for uh, these expenses. Uh, and um, the 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 services list is pretty um, standard when you look at construction work. Um, there's some construction oversight, traffic engineering, um, some. standard when you look at construction work, um, there's some construction oversight, traffic engineering, um, some, um, some lab testing. But uh, uh, basically uh, providing those support services that are uh, technical in nature that we can't provide in-house, but are important to making sure you have a project that comes up the way you want it to. So um, we have worked with mainland in the past, and although this is um, a uh, roughly nineteen this was a twenty thousand dollar uh, proposal, um, I think that it's warranted to make that award to them uh, rather than going through an RFP process because they've been involved from the get-go on this. Uh, have the uh, institutional knowledge to make it successful, uh, and have been a pleasure to work with along the way.
Well, and wh- when I look at this too, seventy-five percent of it, it's not really, it's the permit, application fees.
Yeah.
So we're paying that fee no matter who we're working with. So I'd rather, in my eyes, when I read this, I was.
Just makes sense to use the same people that have been working on it all along. They've done a good job, so.
Jaren?
I just want the board to be aware that the owner of mainland is a personal friend of mine. I don't have a conflict, but just in spirit.
Yep, of course.
Appreciate that. Uh, so what I'm looking for from the board is um, I guess a two-part motion, one that would authorize the suspension of the purchasing policy um, to do a sole source uh, award, uh, and then two, to award uh, uh, to assign this work to mainland uh, in the amount shown and um, yeah, authorize me to sign it.
So I'll make a motion to suspend our purchase policy to enter into this agreement.
You wanna do two motions, uh, do it all in one?
All one's fine.
And sign this agreement. And 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 allow Eric to sign this agreement on the board's behalf.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Any other business upcoming meetings or any agenda items anyone would like to discuss this evening?
Two, really quickly, and I should have mentioned both of them earlier. Uh, one is we are looking for um, a select board person to help out with the fundraising committee uh, actively. I know Steve's kind of on the email list. Um, I don't know if you have some, you have time or interest in, but um, I think we need a little, just a little bit more leadership. Um, I I I'm trying to kind of fill the gap a little bit, but I really think that um, it might be more effective if it was coming from a a member of the select board. No decisions tonight, but I I I would like y'all to think about whether or not that's something you might be able to help out with. Uh, you know, once a month meetings over the next five or six months as we try to get this stuff going, so. But uh, so that's the first thing. The second thing is um, we do have an M and A election. Um, I didn't bring it up because there's, there's like three spots and there's three candidates. So um, but I just wanted to let you know that I will be, uh, unless you object, completing that uh, form on behalf of the town and assigning those four people to their four spots.
Please do.
Please do, yes.
All right. That's all I have.
Anybody else? I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, third.
All those in favor? Conclude the meeting at seven thirteen.
Thank you. Well done.
We even snuck in a secret agenda item.